No.
I found that it seemed like it was really in the same spot.
Yeah. Like I feel like I'm not. The funny thing is.
Oh, yeah.
So similar, like I had this like thought of my head. Thanks.
If that's not how we're going to support that.
They're online.
We will ask HBL. I have the name of the show on the table tomorrow.
Okay.
That's.
Correct. Six twenty. How was it?
Like, dude, I feel like this is fun.
Congratulations.
You're old.
Last ten years, all who stand are also considered more than my deep possibility.
Some counties.
Remember that there's.
All the vices are recording. We're just waiting for the time. Mayor Schaubert, if I can just do a test hello for you on your audio.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. I'm clear. Thank you, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I'm using my cellphone.
Sounds great. Thank you, sir.
Are we ready to start?
Ready. Ready, sir.
Okay. I'm going to call to order the Stanton City Council Successor Agency Housing Authority Joint Regular Meeting. If you'd all please rise for the pledge. Councilmember Torres, will you please lead us?
Ready to begin.
I am a Republican citizen of Florida, in the United States of America. It's your republic, the Constitution, one nation, and our government. It is all.
Thank you, Donald. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Council Agency Authority Member Taylor.
Here.
Council Agency Authority Member Warren.
Here.
Council Agency Authority Member Warren.
Here.
Mayor Bo T. Man.
Here.
Mayor Chairman Schaubert.
Here. Okay, at this time, we have special presentations and awards. This is being declared October eighth through the fourteenth as Fire Prevention Week in Stanton. Mayor Vice Mayor Van, would you please handle this?
Sure. The week of October eighth through fourteen, twenty twenty-three has been designated Fire Prevention Week, and this year's theme is cooking and safety starts with you. Pay attention to fire prevention. The Stanton City Council does hereby declare the week of October eighth through fourteen, twenty twenty-three, to be Fire Prevention Week throughout the city of Stanton, and in doing so encourages the citizens of this community to join with the city council in practicing and urging Orange County residents to also practice safe cooking habits. Stay in the kitchen while cooking. Remove items from around the stove that can catch fire and to also support the many public safety activities and efforts of Orange County Fire Authority during Fire Prevention Week. Chief Jordan.
Good evening, all Mayor Councilmembers, city staff, and citizens of Stanton. It is my pleasure to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Orange County Fire Authority in partnership with the city. A little bit about Fire Prevention Week. It was actually started by the National Fire Protection Association back in nineteen twenty-two to commemorate the great Chicago Fire of eighteen seventy-one. The great Chicago Fire occurred on October eighth through the tenth in eighteen seventy-one. It destroyed over seventeen thousand buildings and structures, claimed over three hundred lives. Fire Prevention Week teaches children and adults how to stay safe in the event of a fire. As you stated earlier, this year's theme is going to be Cooking Safety Starts With You. Pay attention to fire prevention. According to the National Fire Protection Association, cooking is the leading cause of home fires and is also the leading cause of home fire injuries each year. And attended cooking is the leading cause of home cooking fires and related deaths also in households. Following are some cooking safety messages that support this year's theme. It's always keep a close eye on whatever you're cooking for foods that require monitoring times. We recommend start use a timer to go back in and check on periodically. Make sure you clear away any combustible materials, towels, paper towels, cloth, anything that says stove or I could possibly catch fire. It's also to create a kid pet prezone around any type of cooking or combustible materials like that. In coordination with Fire Prevention Week, also the Orange County Fire Authority will be hosting our annual fire station open house at twenty-eight of our local fire stations, including fire station forty-six here in Stanton. This can be held on Saturday, October fourteenth, from ten o'clock in the morning till one P M. at the fire station. And I'd like to invite you, your family members, and friends down to the local fire station. It's an excellent opportunity to meet for so for us to meet our citizens and also for a chance to interact with firefighters, learn a little bit more about home fire safety, and take us to our fire station. And then lastly, in conjunction with this year's open house and Fire Prevention Week, every year we do participate in Spark a Level toy drive, which we usually kick off right after Thanksgiving. But this year to meet our goal of collecting more than four hundred thousand, excuse me, forty thousand toys for over one hundred nonprofit agencies that share in the toy drive. We're actually going to kick off that toy drive with our open house. So if you come down to fire station and like to participate, we ask you to bring any unwrapped gift or toy and you can drop it off at our local fire station to kick off this year's Spark a Level part tour. Thank you, I think. Thank you for your, once again, for this proclamation. And available for any questions and comments if you have any.
Thank you, Chief. Alice, have you given the proclamation, please? Thank you.
Please see the proclamation and photos.
If we could get a picture of all the council members with the chief, I would appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, next we have a presentation by Townsend Public Affairs about our state and federal legislative report and update. Mr. Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. I'm here in the council. Eric Bonn on Townsend Public Affairs. If you're here again tonight. We had a lot to cover this time. It's the end of session last week or two weeks ago. So I'll try to go as quick as I can while I can. September fourteenth was the last day of our legislative session. They, the governor has thirty days to sign or veto all the bills that passed during that time. Team, those are the two choices, sign or veto. Technically, you could not sign something but not veto it and still become law. But that's kind of a rarely used tool by the governor. But sign or veto by October fourteenth, and then they come back in January for the second year of a two-year session. So all bills that did not pass this year are still a lot of two-year bills coming back next year. And we will see what happens then and as well as what other bills are introduced in January. Couple of statistics for you for the year. Over three thousand bills were introduced in California this year. That includes resolutions and non-binding types of resolutions that the legislature can introduce. Approximately eleven hundred policy-related bills were passed this year. Five hundred bills were signed. That should really say it's chaptered. So that includes resolutions, like I said, that the governor does not sign that are still part of law. So that should really say five hundred and ten bills chaptered, which includes resolution, which is why those numbers come out of if you do the math in your head. Sixty bills vetoed so far, and over eight hundred on his desk as of this morning. For me to consider before October fourteenth. That is a lot of those if you're kind of going through a company per day. It's the average. It's quite a bit toward the end there. He will do several dozen per day, sometimes close to a hundred. For example, he was in New York all the last week, so he didn't have a chance to do much while he was there. But definitely focus on these hundred and ten. They will be determined one way or another by October fourteenth. Moving quickly to probably the biggest takeaway from this year legislatively of the governor's package, his behavior on the three-four package. We talked about this a little bit. It kind of came up later in the session. But essentially, this is a package of two bills. It kind of plays on the governor's care courts that he did earlier last year, as you remember. That's rolling out that lead next month, actually, in Orange County. But essentially, it's a two-bill package, the first one being eighty-five thirty-one by Senator Irwin, which is a six point three billion dollar bond for behavioral health treatment in residential settings. So it's additional money from M H S A to be poured out into the state to deal with this mental health crisis that we are experiencing and specifically related to housing of these mentally devastated individuals. S B three twenty-six, equally importantly, is a policy shift that comes with the money. So it's kind of a two-prong approach. Here's more money and let's change how we're using it to begin with. So S B three twenty-six has changes associated with the existing M H S A, including renaming it, actually. But it also, most importantly, I think it expands the pool of eligible, of who's eligible for services under M H S A. So currently, unless you have a doctor's note that says you are mentally unwell because of substance use disorders, you cannot, you can't receive that funding. But now, just by having a substance use disorder, you are eligible to receive M H S A funding, which is a big change in policy to not have to go through that extra medical hoop, which can be a burden and sometimes is not exactly the most accurate. So that's, that is probably the biggest change this year that the governor's been pushing for. This is a baby, and we'll get to exactly what that means later. In that six point three eight billion dollar bond, I will say is one point five billion for cities and counties for exactly what that is, behavioral health treatment in residential settings. But most importantly, it does not include continuums of care, which usually all that money gets pushed out through the continuum of care. But this one point five billion dollar set aside is just cities and counties. So it's yet to be seen how that's spent, but it could be a way that the county boards or even the city could access funding there that is not having to go through. Which is a big change in current policy. Couple other things. The bond also includes some, I mean, I'll call it a poison pill language, that it does require some buy right streamlining for some of this housing that they want to build. So if you are going to use bond funding to build this housing, it does get a buy right streamlining provision, the same way that other affordable housing developments might have in a city or a S B thirty-five type streamlining. There is a list of criteria, meaning it has to be zone multifamily, and it has to be a buffer zone, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not everywhere, but it is something that we need to be aware of is that when we are using this money, it will be a buy right streamlining process that the city might not have too much control over those design standards. And then S B three twenty-six by A B N has a couple other things. The most important one being there is now a thirty percent set aside for housing intervention programs. Currently, M H S A can all be services. The county can use it on whatever they want. Now, at least thirty percent has to be used on housing solutions, permanent support of housing solutions for behavioral health challenged individuals. That's also a big change in law. So right now, we have a lot of money for services, not a lot of money for housing. We're trying to flip that, trying to make sure that we have permanent support of housing going into the next phase of this crisis we're experiencing. I should say both of those have passed. They're going to be on the ballot in March of twenty twenty-four. Fentanyl overdose was a huge topic this year in California. Everyone has seen the news. It's all with the rage. There was not a whole lot, I will say. It is a very complicated issue. It's not as easy as you think. There was a lot of roadblocks in the legislature about anything to do with fentanyl because of how much it would increase crimes and penalties in our penal codes, which is already some folks believe is already over the top. So what they did is they compromised. They passed two bills. One of them establishing a task force to further research and advise on the situation. The other one increasing penalties for very large amounts of fentanyl. That aligns with cocaine, heroin, and other special drugs when it comes to possession. There's also a new assembly, a select committee, starting next year. So what a select committee is, is it's a committee that doesn't necessarily meet routinely, but it can meet as needed. So think of it as a special committee that's a special that has one, one mission. So this would be the new committee on fentanyl, addiction, and prevention. It is different than like a housing committee or a local government committee that meets every week and they have routine bills they have to take up. This is an as-needed committee. You'll probably meet once or twice before the end of the year and then maybe a handful of times next year, but it's not going to be as consistent. I will say it's a good step in the right direction, but the Assembly Public Safety Committee and the Senate Public Safety Committee are still going to have final say over whatever bills do come out of this, and those have been the roadblocks to pass. So I don't expect anything quickly on fentanyl to come out of the legislature, but there will be more conversations than ever before going into next year. Priority legislation, we've already been over this. This is a valve measure. This is the book even that we've all been talking about going in March of twenty twenty-four. This is the Taxpayer Protection and Government Account Act. This is referred to as C B R T, Government Business Roundtable, is the sponsor. This is one that is very bad for the city. It would really restrict how much you can raise your own revenues. It would put your fee schedules in disarray and potentially up from people's reputation. As that's, I just put this up there as context. That's already qualified, and we know that, which is why I said last time, A C A thirteen is what the response was to that, that valve measure saying, you want to raise the rate, the thresholds for what we need to pass taxes, then you also need to pass by that same threshold, if you remember that from last time. So C B R T raises that threshold for special taxes to its two-thirds. So this A C A thirteen says, okay, then you have to pass by two-thirds by California voters and not majority. Two-thirds in California is very difficult to pass on the ballot. So this is a clever attempt to make sure that the valve measure you saw on the last slide does not pass. So this is the one backed by the California City C S D A. The city of Stanton supported it in the last couple of months in the legislative session. So this was the big fight in Sacramento in the last several weeks. I'm happy to say it did pass. We were, us and the lead and C S D A did a really good time, a really good job whipping votes on the floor at the final minute to make sure it did pass. They only had one extra vote than what it needed, so it was very, very thin margins. But this is kind of where the drama started. So when it, when it was passing, the governor phoned in a, phoned in a call to the Assembly Board here and essentially threatened, you know, repercussions if they passed it without ensuring that it would go on the November ballot next year instead of the March ballot. So when, when it was being discussed, the March ballot was where we wanted it to go. So if it went before the C B R T measure, the governor wants nothing else on that March ballot that he can help besides the behavioral health fund that we just talked about. That is very important that he did not want the components of this measure coming out in March, spending money, getting voters out to then also oppose his behavioral health measure. So he's been very careful with that. So he made, I will say, the Assembly Board, we were requested that we hold off this measure until November of next year. So it'll still be on the ballot in November with C B R T side by side. Whatever measure gets the most votes will rank superior on that. But it's a change in what we thought going into it before the governor got involved. Personally, I don't think either of them are going to make it to the ballot in March, excuse me, November. I think there will be an negotiation and a deal between the legislature, the governor, and California Business Roundtable to remove both ballot measures. We'll give you something else in return, just so we don't have to go through this mess in November. Yet, we'll find out that has to happen by maybe June of next year. We'll find out. That was definitely the drama of the last night of session was pulling this over into November instead of March. And then A C A one, we've also talked about very briefly, but this is a unrelated but also related measure that did pass and will be on the November twenty twenty-four ballot. As well, this just reduces your bond threshold if you want to use public bonds for affordable housing or public infrastructure from two-thirds to fifty-five percent. So it makes it a little bit easier to generate some of that revenue if you did want to use bonds or special core bonds or any other type of funding source that way to use on public infrastructure or for. And then looking forward to next year with our state budget. If you remember, our, our tax deadline got pushed to October this year. So we still don't have a full kind of understanding of where our tax receipts are coming in in California. We can guess, but right now, we're expecting right now, next year, best case scenario, a slight budget deficit going into next year. Better than our thirty-two and a half billion dollar deficit this year. But it's still very, very early. Yet to be, yet to be seen. Lots of things could happen between now and then, and who knows? We could push the tax deadline next year, too, to give us an even more unclear picture. But right now, it's looking a little bit better than it was this year, but we don't think it's going to be a massive waterfall or something like it was. You know, the governor will release his budget in January. That'll be very telling. State by ballot initiatives, we just went over all of them. Except I will mention that there will be a rent cap constitutional amendment on the ballot as well next year that would reinstate the local ability to have rent caps. That was taken away several years ago. Four cities would prove be interesting to see where that goes and how the messaging is on that. And then there will be additional bonds for consideration next year that needs to pass the legislature on the topics of climate, housing, and education. So those three topics, you can almost, you can almost guarantee every, every ballot you see a bond for one of those three things, right? It seems like. So you can guarantee that those will be competing next year in the legislature for space on the, on the ballot. In November. Switching gears very quickly to the federal side. Our state, federal budget year ends in four days now, September thirtieth. So we still don't have a continuing resolution, but we will by September thirtieth. Definitely not going to have a budget by September thirtieth. We haven't done that in several, several decades now, I think. But our earmark funding for the Public Safety Center reorganization is where it needs to be. Exactly. It's, it's no change from last time. So that money, a million dollars of that is still included in the T W A bills on both of the House side. And when it gets reconciled with the Senate, we've got that to stay in, much like earmark process the last couple of years. So no update there, just to say that it's still moving. And whenever the final budget is negotiated, we do expect it to be. And then finally, sorry, keep doing that. Finally, we are working again, I think I reported this out last meeting, too. Still working on the O C T A Complete Streets Grant Program for the Orange Wood Avenue and San Antonio area for bike lanes and sharrows and other pedestrian and bike dependent improvements. And then we are still waiting on the three grant applications we submitted last year, land and water conservation fund, splash pad and transport courts, and the Safe Streets for All Vision Zero Land City to reduce transportation related fatalities. And then finally, before I leave, a quick update on the S B three fifty-seven by Senator Weiner that bordering with the intent to commit prostitution bill that we talked about last time. We are still working on that, looking for more information and coalition members. The city sent over some great data that we sent over to Senator Weiner's staff to kind of try to prove our point and prove our issue. So I'm following up with them on that. But our coalition of people that are raising their hand is growing all of a sudden. So it's, it's now it's up to Compton, Enrayville, Berkeley, Oakland, San Diego, and National City, or all the cities that have expressed concerns with the bill that was passed that is causing our angst as well. So we're working with the League of California Cities Public Safety lobbyists as well to try to figure out a way to kind of bring these people together with either collaborative solutions about how to deal with it now with existing law or potentially some changes we're going to go for next year to see if we can help publicly the problem. But still working on that. We have a meeting next week with the, it's the City of National City, City of National City's police chief to talk about what they're doing because they were kind of the first to, first to mark it on the, on the public side of this. So we'll report out what we learned from that, and that will not be answering questions.
I have a quick question. You had mentioned the rent cap constitutional amendment. Does that also include mobile home parks or no?
Yeah, I knew you were going to ask that. I don't, I haven't seen that language in quite some time to confirm. I'm going to guess no, only because the nuance of renting the land, it's not the units, right? The same way that you, the rent cap statewide do not apply to mobile home. I'm going to guess that it also does not apply mobile home that way. But I can go back and check and confirm. That's a really good point of clarification.
Are there any other questions? Okay, I have a quick one. We have a bill that's in Congress, I believe, for funding. That was a million dollars from Congressman Lou Correa for our sheriff's station. If they sign the budget, will that be included? Is that part of what we're waiting for?
Yes, once the final federal budget is signed by, you know, by the House, the Senate, and the governor, or sorry, the president, that will include the earmark list from nationwide, not just the city of Stanton, but everyone nationwide is all lumped together into one pot.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? All right, thank you for that excellent report. We appreciate the update, especially at the state level. Okay, moving on now, we're going into our consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar may be acted on simultaneously unless a council board member requests separate discussion. Is there anything that is wished to be pulled? Okay, Madam Clerk, have we had anything request from the public?
Mr. Mu, we have none.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there a motion then to move items A through K? Thank you. And is there a second?
Second.
Yes, sir. We have a motion by a council member, Taylor, a second by council member, Torres. I will now proceed with the roll call rule. Council Agency Authority Member Torres.
Yes.
Council Agency Authority Member Taylor.
Yes.
Council Agency Authority Member Warren.
Yes.
Mayor Bo T. by Chairperson Van.
Yes.
And Mayor Chairman Schaubert.
Yes. Okay, I, thank you. Okay, under unfinished business, item A, this is special project quarterly update presentation. Is that Hannah?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, honorable Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to invite management analyst Jason Lee now, and he will be giving tonight's presentation.
Yes, can you be okay?
Yes.
All right, wonderful. Good evening, honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Today, I'm happy to present the general fund special projects update. You might remember the outline template. This is formerly ARPA funded, but we have since shifted our ARPA funds while still keeping these projects in play. So here's an update on the various projects that were federally funded, but now are general funds. So we'll start off with community services. We did have a couple of programs that are kind of sponsored as a special project. The first one on that being one of the newer ones, the summer camp program. So that started this past summer. We had a hundred and five participants for our first go-around, which is pretty impressive. And we're planning to do that for the next summer as well. The F R C counseling services, this was kind of an expansion of our program so that we can have more of a full-time presence for both individuals and families. We had two hundred and one individuals served between June twenty twenty-two and July of this year. And that's a total of over a thousand three hundred sessions. And also, you'll notice on the right side, we have the percentage of the budget expended. We are no longer, you know, because.
We are no longer, you know, because these are general funds, we are no longer time-bound on these, but we would still like for these special projects to be, you know, rolled out in a timely manner and not have to drag along. The senior meal distribution has been probably the biggest success in terms of the strictly statistics standpoint. Just this year through July, we've distributed over 1,000 of the Second Harvest Food Bank pantry kits, 2,444 lunch cafe meals, and the home-delivered meals, over 4,000. So that's been really good. It's kind of been like that emergency food distribution, also senior food distribution. So it's been a major helps the community. Community Services has a couple of major planning projects going on, first being the Parks Master Plan, and we are nearing completion on this. So the final draft has been reviewed by the Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission, and next month we hope to have that finalized. I know that it's been a long time since we've had, you know, an up-to-date Parks Master Plan. So it would be great to kind of have that planning going forward, especially with all of the new park renovations that we have planned. The city grant refresh is another one that is very much nearing completion. So just this month, the council committee reviewed the local designs, and so we think there was three concepts that we are going to open up to the public for community feedback. So I would, depending on how long that survey is, we should have that grant locked in by the end of this year. You'll notice that the budget doesn't quite match the, or the amount expended doesn't really match our progress to date, and that's likely because of that, the payment for that project is done in phases. So we have a lot of different parks that I mentioned that are undergoing some revitalization, Stansum Park being just one of them. Currently, we have some design kind of concepts that are being honed, and we're awaiting the final scope and fees for those design efforts. One of the things that makes that project in particular interesting is that, you know, we're thinking about the Norm Ross Sports Complex being right next to it, so we can think of those as together kind of like a campus sort of effect. And that's part of the reason why the upgrading of the pedestrian bridges is so important. To help with the Norm Ross Sports Complex, we have brought on an assistant city engineer, and he's been helping with the main meetings that we've had towards like the planning With the Memorial Park, this one has had a lot of progress in terms of design. I mean, the contract that just this week submitted a 100% plan of plans that includes the specs and the cost estimates. And because of that, we are on track to award that building contract early next year. The grants to the Boys and Girls Club of Stanton, so this dates back to the very beginning, back when it was ARPA. The Boys and Girls of Stanton was given $250,000, and they are still in the process of conducting their formal informal request bid process for restroom renovations. Another thing that they might do, depending on the cost, was updating their playground system outside, but the first priority is getting the restrooms renovated. Savannah School District has been excellent in giving them sort of the resources to conduct that process. So the renderings of the draft, they've obtained that, built from the building division, and I think they already have at least one open for that. So Alvin Campbell has mentioned that they're estimating completion tentatively for February. So the neighborhood quality of life infrastructure, one of the most visible ones has been the blue light security cameras that have been installed mostly along Beach Boulevard and is run by the City of Anaheim. So it's kind of a continuation of their blue lights south of the city. The guardrails, these guardrails were installed to prevent access to the railroad tracks. So these are built along deep streets, then Deep Street, Oak Street, Cedar Street, Rose Street, and a couple of alleys. You can see a picture of one of the major ones there, and this budget came in well under budget, and so Public Works decided to install an iron gate between Boothless and the Boys and Girls Club. And that has done a good job of preventing access from solicitors or campaigns from the left side. Public Works Projects, so this is one of the major budget items, $600,000 for the Storm Drain Master Plan. This is one of those that's long overdue, and the RFP has been released for that. The storm drain repair on Stanford Avenue is already in the process because we have conducted sort of the video inspection recordings of what has been made. So from there, it's going from our on-call maintenance, we did that first part, to the construction part that will actually do the repairs. That one will be, the RFP should be complete later this year. The ADA Transition Plan, so this was kicked off, I believe, in the beginning of this year. We've had inspections and assessments for the public right of way completed. The survey of facilities is still underway, and the Public Works Engineering Department will be trained on it until the summer in October, preparation for the full development of that. So the IT maintenance, this has been sort of a needs basis in terms of our new IT firm identifying what are our highest priorities. And one of our big priorities is our data backup system. Our current data backup system is nearing capacity, and there are, you know, newer, more robust data backup solutions that are have built with more disaster recovery in mind. So they have recommended that we go with Datto, which is a two-prong solution. There's the hardened, like high-capacity physical appliance, but also unlimited cloud storage that will be very useful in the event that, let's say, we did have a cyber attack and we needed to pull everything back up. Having that sort of digitized cloud storage means that it's less of a manual process or of an automatic restoration. So that would mean a lot less downtime for us. Any sort of budget that we have left over would be used for other IT projects. We're already kind of compiling sort of a priority list on what projects we want to get addressed. The City Hall Fire Line Upgrade, this is kind of a shared responsibility between IT and Public Works. OCFA is working on their second review of the plans that have just been recently resubmitted by Climate Tech. So once we get approval from OCFA, then we'll have Climate Tech via building permits, and we can have that constructed. This is one of the projects that has been sort of modified in the scope of it based on the amount that, amount of budget we have for it. This is just for the City Hall water lines. Orange County Sheriff's Department, we did have a couple of positions. This is, again, one of the few that is right from the very beginning of ARPA. So the Crime Prevention Specialists and the Office Specialists really helped strengthen that sort of community relation between the Sheriff's Department and our general public. They've conducted seven neighborhood watch meetings, neighborhoods. We've had three businesses that have been welcomed by the Crime Prevention Specialists, and those are two for beach terraces, the Beach Terrace Memory Care and the Beach Terrace Water Sea, as well as Royal Camp Harrow on Beach Boulevard. The Business Watch Meetings are still ongoing, so continuing to build those relationships. And the active shooter training is, I believe, now an annual training, which has been pretty well-attended. In addition, just more broader kind of outreach, there have been a few for the child and school safety, visiting the Boys and Girls Club, teaching about honesty and kindness, bike registration, so we're going to have those apps and easier reporting, and then seven other major events, including Citizens Academy, the first, the Open House, the National Night So this project has been changed. This is our Public Safety Reinforcements. This has been kind of moved based on what are our current needs in the Public Safety Department. And so with extra code enforcement specialists, we've been able to expand the hours services into the evening and weekends. There's been, with this new specialist, we have 30 action items, which means that everything parking sites, those notifications of camping performances. There was one particular incident that Jim Grant went out to meet, which was during one of the shifts, there was a person that was found in the, under a car, and this was something that had to be properly responded to in order to reduce any further injury. And finally, we have the Public Safety Pilot Program. This one is different. This is the homeless liaison officers, so they've conducted, so that's be about a year and a half, 811 homeless contacts, 121 parole probation contacts, almost 100 prostitution contacts, and almost 400 enforcement activities. So that has been very successful. There's been weekly meetings to check in on that pilot program to see if we wanted that to be made more permanent. And with that, that is all of the special projects that I've major about these, and I am available for any questions.
Thank you. At this time, are there any council members that would like to ask a question?
I remember the slide where you had community services. I know these programs are completed, but it's closely under pressure at these.
Okay, this item is also open for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to talk about this? Item A, it would be item AA on the agenda. Have we had any written requests, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, we don't have any written requests, but at this time, Mayor Hope Town Van does have a question.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Mayor, how do you explain that huge, you know, I guess, under budget that you, was just over budgeting for it, or you guys failed to provide certain services, or how do you do that?
Mayor Hope Town Van, so the budget that was provided was supposed to be over multiple years. So this is just reporting on the first year of activities. So if you remember when ARPA was originally in state and the funds were provided to the city, the deadline to complete all activities was December of 2024. And so we are just in the first half of that usage period. So we are sending you updates as we go along through time, providing quarterly updates, so you will see that percentage of the budget continuing to be expected. And actually, if I could say one more thing, this is actually even shorter than that because at the beginning of Jason's presentation, he talked about how the ARPA was reallocated in June by the city council action on June 13th, and so a lot of these projects that were formerly funded by ARPA are being funded by the general fund. And so this is just the budget that was allocated by the council on June 13th. The general fund goes from now multiple years, as Hannah mentioned. And so these costs are just through, from June 13th, the council allocated the money to the general fund, through August 31st of 2023, right, Jason?
Yes.
So that's just for actually only about three months, two, less than three months.
Yes, so part of that budget would have been, you know, actually ARPA money before we had the ARPA budget.
Jason, on your IT budget, so are you installing hardware, storage, and then doing the RAID to the cloud?
Yes, so it's, I believe that one was a RAID five system.
Okay.
And that is one that was identified both by our IT specialists as well as by our new IT firm, Infinity Technologies. So they both separately kind of concluded that Datto was the best solution for the city. And so we are fairly confident that that solution will provide that disaster upgrade of service.
So what are you using for the physical storage on site?
So currently, our appliance is by Derek Cooder Networks, and that one is probably close to 90% full, and so that we've had, I believe.
Is it near, Mr. Kurt, tape?
Yes, so I believe that we were thinking about, at the time with our old IT firm, it was about switching to the tape solution. So I believe that that one is not the tape solution, although we have any time that there has been like an overage, then we can have the source of tapes.
Okay. So are you backing up the DIS then?
So yes, currently, we're backing up with DIS. This new improved one will have the DIS with the further RAID capabilities.
Actually, your tapes are probably really safe. A lot of people are going back to tape because the new hackers can't be bothered with it because it's so much more difficult to break into, so.
Yeah, there are, there are pros and cons to each type of solution, Hannah.
Gary, do you have any questions?
No.
None from Gary, sir.
Councilmember Taylor?
None from.
Councilmember Torres?
No.
None from Councilmember Torres, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any other questions from anyone? Okay, thank you very much for that presentation. Okay, we'll now move on to item 9A. This is under new business. This is informational report on California jaywalking law in consideration of an ordinance regulating pedestrians on the street, meeting islands, and drive-throughs. I believe this is HD.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, good evening, councilmembers. Item 9A has. Item nine A has basically three parts to it. The first part is an explanation of new state law regarding jaywalking, which is otherwise the term that describes crossing a road or street unlawfully. Um, and followed by that is an explanation and consideration by the Council of two ordinance that encapsulates two parts relating to pedestrians on street medians as well as pedestrians in drive-through queues and UPA leaves around the area. So, uh, first explanatory portion on the new state law. Effective January 11th of this year, through Assembly Bill twenty-one forty-seven, the, the law was changed so that now pedestrians are allowed to cross road or street at places other than a protected crosswalk. Uh, as long as a person, a reasonable person, would believe that it was safe to do so. So, uh, the city acknowledges that certainly the state has the ability to enact changes to the vehicle code, vehicle code where these changes are needed. Um, that said, you know, there has been recognition by the city about dangerous conditions, um, in, in streets, uh, particularly around medians within the city. Uh, Beach Boulevard is classified as a state highway that runs right through the city's standard, uh, speed limit of thirty-five miles per hour. And, uh, this city probably has better figures than me, but thousands of cars, as you can see, traverse that state highway, you know, on an annual basis. So looking at statistics over a five-year period, I'll just highlight that there's been a hundred and thirty-four pedestrian versus vehicle fatalities within the city, uh, which is, you know, a, a good amount and unfortunate. And so the proposed, uh, one of the proposed ordinance relates to, uh, medians, street medians. And it is a conduct prohibition. It would prohibit individuals from sitting, standing, and lying or otherwise remaining along a street median. Uh, there are exceptions that are built into this, reasonable exceptions, including, uh, law enforcement, or if there's an accident that someone needs to use that median. Um, contractors who are taking care of the landscape or otherwise maintaining the median, as well as folks now who can typically cross the street anywhere. They temporarily use that median to facilitate that active and safe crossing. Um, so those are some of the few exceptions. And this was, uh, proposed, um, kind of bubbled up from the state council and drafted by staff to address those dangerous conditions in an effort to better protect public health, welfare and safety. The second proposed portion of the ordinance is, uh, similarly proposes a prohibition on individuals sitting, standing, or lying in a driveway queue, um, and within six feet of that area. There are exceptions as well. For example, an adjacent area would not include the public right of way. Um, and again, the overarching policy behind the proposed ordinance is about public health, welfare and safety in that driving, drive-through queues, whether it's for fast food restaurants or drive-up pharmacies, are really meant for vehicle, vehicular access. Um, the exception would be, uh, some businesses have employees out through the driveway queue, um, in kind of protected areas to help customers along. Um, and the second issue is drive-throughs are unique in that they present, um, a place where people can get boxed in essentially. So, uh, most of us have sat through a drive-through and there's usually someone who's in front of us or behind us, and there's very little room to, to maneuver. And that, uh, puts those individuals as captive audience, um, and the inability to quickly get in or out. Um, so it is a protective measure as well. Uh, there are statistics that, you know, were provided in the stat report of crimes against people who are queuing in a drive-through, who were, um, held at gunpoint in neighboring or nearby cities. And so, um, this is also proposes the health, welfare and safety, um, set in ordinance. So with that, I'm, I would be happy to take any questions, but that's the next session.
Uh, thank you, HD. Um, uh, before we go forward, is there anyone, um, that has asked, uh, to ask, uh, address item, agenda item nine A?
Mr. Mayor, we do have none. At this time, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address item nine A on the agenda this evening? Mr. Mayor, we have no members of the audience wishing to make comment on item nine A at this time.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and begin. Um, I fully support, um, the regulation and the adoption at our next meeting of the ordinance. As we all know, we've had more deaths than probably any city our size on Beach Boulevard in our side streets, whether it was Dale, um, with Mary, or whether it was people on Nine Avenue. And I think the fact is, is that we have to be able to protect those people, um, that don't. I guess we used to have a law against jaywalking to protect them. I think this would bring back, uh, a protection for health and safety of our community. Also, our business community on their easements and their, um, medians um, also have people that are endangering, uh, the flow of traffic and causing concern with the, um, you know, whether or not they're going to be able to get in and out of parking, parking lots and other structures. So I fully support it at this time. Uh, that being said, I'll turn it over. We'll just go down the line. Uh, so Alice, you're up, please.
I did want to note for those who didn't have a chance to read the ordinance, that, um, there is language in there to protect anyone who's just using the median as a quick rest point while they, um, try to cross the other side. But I envision, you know, senior citizens who might be on wheelchairs and they can't quite make the whole length of Beach Boulevard in one light. So they might, uh, go to the median and just take a quick break. And then when the next light goes on, they can continue their journey. Um, so this does not apply to, um, folks who are just actively trying to cross Beach Boulevard if they have to stop at the median for a short period of time. Um, so I, I, I think it's, it's good that there's language like that to protect pedestrians who are using, um, our crosswalk.
Thank you. Cheryl?
I fully support this. Um, a lot of people have been taking advantage of prior legislation as far as jaywalking goes for the state. And, um, there, there's, several people have died from it, crossing in the middle of the street in the middle of the night and people can't see them. And it turns out really, really bad. And so, um, I fully support this.
Thank you, Gary.
Question, um, a reasonable person rule. Would it be a reasonable person's, I guess, choice to cross Beach Boulevard, jaywalking, like at night? Is that reasonable at any time of the night? In other words, would reinforce that at night?
Uh, Mayor and Council, the reasonable person standard, I, I guess it would really depend, um, on, is it reasonable to cross Beach at night when there's poor visibility? Uh, I, I guess it depends on the factors and the way the new laws, new state laws set up. It really is going to be fact-driven. So I guess the questions I would ask is, you know, what time of the night? Three morning, four morning, public has less traffic. Um, how is the area lit up, right? Sort of their street lights that kind of give that visibility. I, you know, so whether or not it's reasonable or not will be highly fact-driven.
I have talked to a couple of, uh, deputies. Some of them are fine in particular for, uh, crossing Beach Boulevard in a very hazardous, dangerous way. So I guess we can still approach to an agreement. Thank you.
Mr. Taylor, I'm, I'm sorry, um, uh, Councilmember Torres, please.
Yeah, um, I think City Stat is doing a good job. In the past as well, so thank you.
Um, one of the other things I'd like to bring up, and I know, Donald, you brought this up at our last meeting. Um, I know that, um, I checked and that we are not ticketing mentally ill people over and over again. I will still continue to try to find them help. But I'll be honest with you, I spend a lot of time out in the community, and there are so many people that have mental issues that are walking down our medians, walking against red lights in our crosswalks, and hanging out in areas of high traffic. This ordinance will give us the ability to at least reach out to them and help them, uh, to be safe and to protect them. Right now, under the way the code is written, we have no, we have no ability to help these people and to protect them. That being said, I'm going to make a motion at this time that we go ahead and move forward, uh, with the recommended action. And that is to introduce ordinance number one-one-three-three for its first reading to be read by title only and to bring it back at our next City Council meeting. Thank you.
Wait a second.
Okay, Madam Cork, are there any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, going to receive what the roll call vote?
Yes, please.
Councilmember Torres? Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Hookton Van?
Yes.
And Mayor Shaver?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Item has this five zero.
Thank you, um, thank you, fellow council members. I think we've just, if this works out, we've increased the safety of our community, and that's our job. All right, we'll move on to item nine B. This is Mayor, City Council Term Limits, Overview and Policy Options. I believe we go to HD again.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At the August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three meeting, the City Council voted to move forward with a ballot measure to impose three term term limits on all council members and the office of the mayor. Item, uh, nine B is a, uh, discussion item for additional direction from the Council on this matter. Uh, there are a few items that we would like to get more direction on. And that would be for, uh, kind of the specific language, general language of the ballot measure or measures, so maybe one more, more measure, the timing of the measure, um, and how those terms should be combined. I'll get into that a little bit more. I want to give a little bit more background. Currently, the city's ordinance provides that members of the City Council are limited to serving on the City Council for two full terms. The measure was a voter-initiated item, and it is very short. It's a statement that does not give a lot of nuance as to how that term limit should work. Um, what we can glean from that ordinance that currently, currently exists is that it's a lifetime limit. So after two limits on the city, then on the City Council, then that particular council member can no longer serve. Um, there's no limit on the office of the mayor. Um, and so before office drafts that actual ballot measure language, here are the things that we're looking for. Uh, first is whether it should be one measure or more than one measure. And the reason we bring this up is the way that we first envisioned the ballot measure language to be, it, it was going to say something along the lines of, should City Council members and the office of the mayor be limited to three term term limits? Um, that said, if that item went forward to the voters and failed, then we would be at the status quo, which would be two term limits for every City Council member and no term limits for the mayor. So that's the first thing we wanted to flesh out with the City Council is whether there should be one ballot measure or more. Um, you know, pulse, this is a policy, all, each and every one of these items is a policy consideration of the City Council. Um, two term, two ballot measures could be confused into the voters. And so we wanted to put that, uh, in front of the Council for discussion. The other thing is timing of the ballot measure. Uh, there's at least one council member who will be termed out in November twenty twenty-four. Um, if this item proceeded to the March twenty twenty-four ballot instead of the November twenty twenty-four ballot, there could be certainty for everybody and members of the public on, you know, whether the termed-out member could run for that third term. Uh, and on the other side, if that measure was put on the November twenty twenty-four ballot and, you know, whether it passed or, or didn't pass, that could, that could create uncertainty for the voters. Um, and then the third item we'd like to get confirmation from the City Council is how the term limit should be applied. Would it be, so let's say there's three terms, uh, three for the City Council, three for the mayor. Should that be a combined term so someone can only serve twenty-four, you know, you know, four times three, twelve, right, uh, years? Or should it be, you know, three, and three trips and three terms? So that term would be longer. So what we're talking about in that instance is combined terms or separate terms? I, uh, propose that we go through this one by one to get, uh, to make it very clear and, and. Uh, so the first thing I would propose to the Council for consideration is whether this Council is looking to have one ballot measure that proposes three terms for both council members and the office of the mayor, or should that be split up into two ballot measures?
I think.
Go ahead, Carol.
I think it should be two ballot measures because, as you said, if it fails, is it failing because of the mayor or is it failing because of the council members? So if we had two separate measures, I think it would be clearer for the people in the city, and I think it'd be clearer for all the way around. Um, as a council, we have to market and support these types of things moving forward so that it's going to behoove all of us to be walking and talking to make sure that the people know what we're talking about and, and what we're looking to do. So, yeah, so all of us have to market.
Go ahead, Gary. Councilmember Taylor, go ahead.
One moment, sir.
Uh, last, um, meeting, uh, former council member, man, yours kind of, uh, brings the, a few thoughts off his head as far as how maybe some, a lot of the voters would feel that, um, maybe this is a, a bridge too far in the three terms. Maybe that is something we should look at before we go any further. I think maybe two terms would be enough. And I think we should, um, include the two terms, uh, for the mayor role position and just leave it at that. Uh, we could decide whether we wanted to put our council member to then run for mayor and a mayor could then run for council member. That's something I think I would be interested in discussing because I don't know how that would work exactly, but I do think we should stay with the two terms.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Hookton Van, please.
I, I would have to agree with Councilmember Taylor. After reading the stat report and hearing from the City Attorney, I'm realizing this is much more complicated than I, I ever thought when I had suggested that we possibly do three terms for everybody interested in it. Um, now that there's all these, um, you know, depending on when it goes on the ballot, if it goes during the primary election in March or if it goes in November, that could really impact, um, you know, who ends up being the council member for, uh, the following year. So, um, and, and there's all these implications. So I, I think with the, with that complexity, and it makes it really difficult for us to, um, have a ballot measure and not be confusing. Because I think if we have two ballot measures, it not only costs more, but it also, um, can be contradictory. And as a resident, when you're trying to vote on these things, um, I, I think we might have some unintended consequences depending on how people may interpret what the ballot measure is asking. Um, and I think the original intent was to, um, limit the mayor's, uh, terms of office of that, or to make it consistent with the rest of the Council. So, um, if that is the intent, then perhaps, um, we should not expand other council members' ability to serve more than two terms. Or if we do want to do that, we can explore that at a different time, um, pass on it at a different election year. So that there wouldn't, there would not be such confusion. Um, so I, I, I support your argument. I think you're, you're correct about this.
Thank you. Councilmember Torres?
Yeah, um, I'll say that I'm on board with Councilmember, uh, Taylor on this issue. Um, I think it's important for us to have a very clear, um, ballot and not, you know, um, cause any confusion for our residents. Just that, uh, Councilmember, I'm just, uh, um, we don't want any ballots to be confused.
Thank you. Um, good, yes.
Another thing to consider is other cities will do a two-term limit. Then they'll make you take a four-year break. And then if people want to run again after that four-year break, they can. So that's something else, whether it's now or later or whatever, that's something else to consider where it's hard because your first four years, you're getting your feet wet, you're starting to understand everything. And then you're pretty effective your second four years, and then you're gone forever. And so that might be something to consider at a later point in time.
So you're saying either you had a lifetime limit or just consecutive limit, right? Second term.
Correct.
Thank you.
When, when the term limit issue was on the ballot, um, a few years ago, it was listed as a lifetime limit, and that's what the voters chose. So when the voters had a shot to vote, they, they chose a lifetime limit.
Absolutely chose that too. Yeah, they have a choice. And this would be brought back to them. I mean, still they have a choice, but I think, I think we should make this version very simple.
Yeah, just keep it simple.
Yeah, just make this version simple. We don't want to do, uh, someone else to figure it out.
Thank you. Um, in summary, I'll just make a statement of my, um, my, uh, opinion over the years. I've been in the city of Stanton now for fifty-two years. One of the strengths of our community has been the longevity and long-serving council members in our city. However, the, uh, citizens of our city spoke, uh, when we came back with measure RR. Um, and it was wrapped up with a couple of other things. Um, so that's how it passed. Not so much term limits as the key issue, uh, but the fact that there was other things, uh, that related in measure RR besides term limits. I will tell you, uh, from my personal experience with all the other cities in Orange County, the cities that have term limits, um, have had difficulty uh, in the way in which they governed, uh, their city council and the city itself. I am a firm believer that term limits are at the polls. If somebody, uh, if the majority of the public do not want to have a representative either in their district or citywide, then they simply vote them out or they vote for the new person. And I think that is the right way to do it. It's the fair way to do it to give everybody in the community an opportunity to vote for who they want, rather than have a clock determine when people are to be removed from office. I, if I do support, um, the vote of the people, uh, for a two-term, uh, lifetime limit. As far as the mayor goes, the mayor is a citywide elected position. If a majority of the people in the city don't like what the mayor's doing or how he represents the city, even though he has no more authority than any one single council member, I don't think it's in our best interest to put a term limit on the mayor's position. And the reason for that is, as I just spoken, term limits for a position on a citywide ballot should be determined by the people and how they vote and how they feel. Therefore, I'm going to be opposing term limits for the mayor. I will continue to support my fellow council members on what direction they want to go, uh, with a lifetime limit. I understand that, um, by us extending it to an additional four-year term, we're actually giving an opportunity for us to move forward. And we do know that that person would still have to run for office. But again, that is my position, just as I said, um, uh, you know, removing the position of mayor. I think that we need to have long-time leadership. Um, we need to have someone stay in that position and work with the, especially with the newly elected council members since we now have term limits. Anyway, thank you for your attention and your consideration. I'll take it back to, um, HD.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, so I would still love direction, uh, from the city council. Uh, it sounds like there's some differing, uh, thoughts. And so if there is consensus, I think the first issue is whether still to proceed or not with a pre-term term limit.
Okay, um, HD, I'm having a little trouble hearing. So as you go through each vote, would you speak clearly and loudly into the microphone for me?
Sure. Mayor Schaller, can you hear me?
I can hear you now. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, you know, I, I believe that staff is still looking for direction from this council. Uh, I would like to take maybe each item per, right, uh, for a vote, if that works with the city clerk. So I think the first item is should the city council move, proceed forward with a valid measure that limits council members and the mayor to three terms? Or not?
Okay, is there, is there gonna be a motion on that?
I think we're looking for more of consensus and direction. Um, perhaps the city clerk could still do a roll call, given that we are uh, operating with virtually and in person to understand if, uh, the council is giving direction on three term limits or not. So, city clerk, if you can assist.
Okay, um, HD, I would like to vibrate the mayor's position out of that question.
Sure. Um, sorry, uh, Councilmember Torres had a question.
I just wanted to note that, um, Mayor Schaller talks about wanting the people to vote for this, yet still poses a question on this ballot. Um, I think it is very essential for us to let the people know and I would love support from our mayor for us to do this.
Okay, um, I, I want to make sure there's no other comments. So I think what I'm gonna do is, uh, the, the issue is by perking the item. So what I'm gonna, what I propose is, one, should the council members, aside from the mayor, be subject to three term limits? Then this next question would be, should the mayor be subject to term limits? If the mayor should be subject to term limits, should it be two terms or three terms? That sounds good. Okay, so.
And where, where is the one for the council? Is that also two or three?
The one for the council would be three terms, given that the council is already subject to two terms.
Thank you.
So the first question that we, I'd like to take a roll call on, is should the council members, aside from the office of the mayor, be subject to three term term limits? City, the city clerk, if you can do a roll call?
Yes. So again, this is just for the council. Roll call two for a?
Three.
Three term limits for council members. I'm gonna start with Councilmember Taylor.
No.
Councilmember Torres? Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Boat and Van?
No.
Mayor Schaller?
Yes.
So we have a vote of three no and two yes, Ms. Attorney.
Thank you. So now I would like to move on to the question of whether the office of the mayor should be subject to term limits. Uh, I would propose at this time, three first? Oh, I've seen shaking hands. Uh, two, let's start with two. I think that was the original proposal. Okay. So the question that is being posed to the city council is should the office of the mayor be subject to a two-term limit?
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Torres?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yep.
Mayor Boat and Van?
Yes.
Mayor Schaller?
No.
Is that four yes and one no, Ms. Attorney?
Thank you. So what we have, just to recap, um, there is, there's direction not to provide a ballot measure with three term term limits for city council members. There's direction to provide, um, a ballot measure for the office of the mayor to be subject to two term limits. So the third question would be whether these term limits should be combined for the offices or they should be separate. So let me explain that. To be combined, so, so it would be two terms, which means eight years. Should those eight years be combined so that any individual could only serve in either office for one term? Or should there be a separate term limit for each office? Meaning council members could have two terms as a council member and then run for the office of the mayor for a separate two terms? Is there any questions on that? Okay.
Instead of voting, instead of voting no, why don't you let us know your preference for combined or separate? And just to clarify a point the city attorney made earlier, the options would be either you could serve under the combined, uh, under the combined choice, either two terms as a council member or two terms as the mayor or one term in each. I think we just said one and one, but it could be two and one and zero on the other, but a total of no more than eight. So as, as the city clerk called your name, if you can please tell us if your preference is for a combined term limit or a separate term limit?
Okay, good. I, I called to have that repeated. I didn't quite understand it. Thank you.
Yes, I apologize. Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I can hear you. Speak up, please.
Well, the question from the dais was, what are we voting on and what does a no vote mean? So for clarification, staff is saying as the city clerk calls each council member or the mayor's name, they will respond with their selection of either combined term limits or separate term limits.
Okay, can you explain that to me?
Yes. So a combined term limit includes any service on the council, whether in position of the council member or the mayor. So the only three possible iterations of that would be two terms as a mayor or two terms as a council member or one term as a council member and one term as a mayor. That would be the combined option. The separate option would allow for two distinct terms as a council member and two distinct terms as a mayor totaling up to sixteen years.
And that's the second one, right?
Correct. So that's the separate option.
Okay, thank you. So you'll read each one before we vote, right?
Yes, the city clerk will do a roll call and then each council member or mayor can let us know if they prefer combined or separate. I'm now gonna begin with Councilmember Taylor.
Combined.
Councilmember Torres?
Separate.
Councilmember Warren?
I'm voting for two terms as the council person and then a consecutive, if the public allows, it's consecutive two terms as mayor. So that would be a sixteen-year sentence.
Mayor Boat and Van?
Separate.
Mayor Schaller?
Yes, I wanna go two terms as mayor and two terms as council member.
Thank you, sir. So we have four for separate and one for combined. Ms. Attorney?
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. So separate again would be two terms as a council member and separately two terms as a mayor. Um, with that, uh, and somebody said the word consecutively, so I just want to be clear that it's not as if two terms as city council and then immediately as mayor. Could there be a gap between that time? I'm assuming there's a gap between the time. The word consecutive threw me off. I just wanted to clarify that. Um, so with that, uh, so what I have is that, uh, the ballot measure that we, our office will bring back for the city council's consideration would be a mayoral term limit of two terms. And it would be a separate term limit for council members versus the mayor. Sorry, and the timing, right? Thank you. Uh, the, here's the last question about timing, whether this council would want this to go to the March twenty twenty-four election or whether the council would want this to go to the November twenty twenty-four ballot?
Is there a cost to it?
Yes, Councilmember Taylor. So the city clerk did a, put in a preliminary request with the Orange County, uh, registrar of voters. There appears to be about a five to ten thousand dollar difference. So it would be about five to ten thousand dollars more expensive to put it on the March ballot versus the November ballot. So we're approximately fifty thousand dollars for March, approximately forty thousand dollars for November.
Uh, great, Carol.
Considering this has no impact on our current mayor, I think it would behoove us to do the less expensive alternative of the November ballot.
I also wanted to note that during a presidential election, the turnout is much larger. It was during a primary election. I would much rather prefer that more people participate in this decision-making than we would.
Okay, I support the March fifth date because this is crucial in determining the future of our city and who is going to be our council members and mayors. I think it's gonna get just lost in the shuffle if we put it in the presidential election. There's gonna be so many people running, there's gonna be so many ballot measures. And therefore, something of this importance needs to be on the March fifth ballot. Ten thousand dollars is, is not that much money compared to how important this ballot measure is. So it is going to be probably the only thing on the ballot. And the people will recognize the significance of the future of the governance of our city. Therefore, I, I really recommend that we do it on March the fifth. It's just gonna get lost in the presidential election. People are not even gonna take a look at it. It's gonna get caught up in a multitude of candidates and a mass mess of, uh, different, uh, things from the, both the senate and from the state government. Thank you.
And council would like, I'll go ahead and do a roll call and you'll just let me know?
Can I just make a quick comment?
Mayor Boat and Van does have a comment, sir?
Sure.
Uh, I, I really want to quickly address the, the question of whether or not people will even take a look at it. If you look at the primary election in twenty twenty, less than fifty percent of people even submitted a ballot. But the presidential election in twenty, sorry, the primary election, less than fifty percent turnout. The presidential election in twenty twenty, close to eighty percent turnout. Um, so whether or not people will even look at it depends on how many people decide to vote. So, um, if you look at our last election in November of twenty twenty-two, which is not a presidential election, um, but it is a general election, we only had forty percent turnout. So the, the turnout plays a big role on how many people will even consider this ballot measure. Um, so I, I would suggest, even if it gets drowned out, there will still be more people voting and looking at this measure if we do it in November.
more people voting and looking at this measure if we do it in November versus in March. Um, it might be more expensive as someone who might be advocating for, you know, the measure, um, if it's in the November, but I think for the city, it'll cost less. It'll cost us $10,000 plus. We'll have more people putting, uh, turning in their ballot and giving us input. And I think that if we put it in March, that's more likely to get lost because people aren't going to vote as, as high of a numbers as in November. So I, I, I would kindly ask that. Everybody could consider putting it in November so that we have more voters looking at this measure, more voters putting in their input, and also it'll cost the city $10,000 less.
Also, um, thank you, councilwoman, I mean, Mayor Proton Van. I just want to let you know that also during those times, the city of Stanton, both for the general and the primary election, had the lowest voter turnout in the state of California, as we do every year. By having it on March, you are highlighting something of great importance. The people that really care about the governance of the city of Stanton will be voting in that special election, that, uh, sorry, the March election, is just going to get lost in the general election. And having more people turn out is not going to influence how they think on a, something that's going to be not, it's going to be insignificant. It's not going to be highlighted. Nobody's going to take a look at it. And therefore, I think you're really going down the wrong path. I understand where you think we'll have more people have an opportunity to vote on it, but historically, if you look over the years, everything that we put on the primary ballot has been successfully, uh, voted on and it usually turns out to be in the best interests of the city. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Alice.
I just want to say that, um, that when we go ahead and we put this on the ballot, right, um, when it comes to an election season, right, especially presidential election season, more people do vote. I think that our constituents have the ability to vote on a measure and, um, also, you know, make a decision about everything else that they do. They make decisions about every single, no reason why they shouldn't be able to vote on this measure and, you know, correctly and, and once again, get to worry about it, right? Um, I just, I think that our constituents have the ability to vote on this measure. And if we are worried about not having larger voter turnout, then I would suggest that we start working on expanding our services for outreach to our voters.
Thank you, Dom. Again, um, I'm just reiterating the fact that, um, unfortunately, um, by also, um, in the realistic real world and the political arena, is that if we do not have this ballot measure, um, in the month of, um, March, um, the, the only, the only one, the only thing being affected by that then, uh, would be, uh, councilwoman, um, uh, Carol Warren. Anyway, thanks, folks. Go ahead. Back to you, uh, HD.
Uh, if here's councilmember Taylor has a question or comment?
Just a comment. I, uh, I agree with councilmember Torres and, uh, Mayor Proton Van. Yeah, I was, uh, council what? Oh, that, um, it being, uh, um, I'm sorry.
So the last question, if we could have a roll call?
Yeah.
So for the timing, I'm going to start with councilmember Taylor.
November.
Councilmember Torres? Councilmember Warren?
November.
Mayor Proton Van?
November.
And Mayor Shaver?
Um, I have it the other day.
Four for November and one for March, Ms. Attorney? Thank you. So that concludes, uh, the discussion item. I don't believe there's any other outstanding questions. Um,
Yeah, HD, I, I wanted, I'd like to make a, a recommendation. Um, I would like for you to give me a, a, a short chart on each council member's, uh, seat and the mayor's seat. And if we do move forward with the recommendations, uh, how it affects each of our district seats and the mayor's seat and what the scenarios would be, please. I think that's important before we, uh, have our next council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, as you, you just bringing it for the, to the full council for consensus on that item, we certainly I can bring that back in the step forward. My understanding of this only impacts the mayor's seat. There's no change in the council seats. That is correct, Mayor and Council. Just to ensure that there's clarity on this issue, um, the direction from the city council tonight is to bring back a ballot measure that would impose a two-term limit on the office of the mayor and that would be separated. So the council would still have a two-term limit and the office of the mayor would have a two-term limit. Um, you know, it pro, it would not affect any of the council member's seats at this time, uh, as we run into the November election. So I, I wanted to clarify for the council and the mayor, is that for the council member who is termed out in November 2024, that council member could still run in the November 2024 election for the office of the mayor. So this particular item that we received direction on tonight does not change that council member's ability to run for mayor.
Thank you for that update. I'll go ahead and get in touch with you later if I have any questions. Uh, any other questions? Otherwise, uh, let's turn it back over to Patricia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, direction has been given to staff. I believe there is no other further options. Is that correct, Ms. Attorney? That's correct. Thank you. This item does not need any other votes. Mr. Mayor, you cannot proceed to item 10, which is oral communication from the public, sir?
Yes, at this time, members of the public may address the city council, successor agency, Stanton Housing Authority, providing any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council, successor agency, Stanton Housing Authority, providing that no action may be taken on non-adjunct items. Is there anyone, uh, in the audience that would wish to speak at this time?
Mr. Mayor, we do have one gentleman who is at the podium this evening. Sir, if you can speak in the microphone your name, and you do have three names.
Hi, I'm just supposed to get a little, and he does, uh, I still got a problem with the CR and, uh, I have two problems. The speeding too, and along with the bridge. And so I put a little, so I want to see what's going on with the noise.
Mr. Guerrero, did you receive my email that I?
Yeah, I received an email. Yeah. And so with the speeding, it's another problem right now. And with the bridge, uh, when is going to be the bridge?
Uh, Mayor and Council, if you'd like, I can provide short updates to Mr. Guerrero. So, and for the benefit of the council and any other members of the public who are listening, so I did send an email, um, uh, Public Works Director Cesar Anhale and I have offered to meet with CRNR and Mr. Guerrero and any other members of his neighborhood to talk about issues specifically related to CRNR. In relation to the bridge, we did need to determine ownership of that bridge before we could move forward on estimates for repair. It did take us a while to locate the historical records between the county and the city. We did determine the city has ownership of the bridge. Because of the bridge's connection with the storm channel, it did need to be assessed by a structural engineer. We have completed that assessment. It was determined that the bridge needs to be repaired at a cost of approximately half a million dollars. We are currently identifying design, um, specifications to bid that out, get an actual price, and we would bring that back to the council. That was obviously not a known project. And in return, I'm, I'm sorry, in regards to the speeding, um, we did meet and discuss the issue in our last parking and traffic committee meeting. We are going to be commissioning a speed study along Santa Rosalia to determine if speeding truly is the problem. We do have some potential physical improvements that may solve some of the issues, but before we move forward with that, due to information that we gained from the Orange County Sheriff's Department Board Deputy who tracks speeding in the city, we wanted to make sure we were addressing the right problem. So we currently have a request out for a cost proposal for that speed study.
Okay, let's know the CR and the noise that's of concern right now because they're still doing the noise. Well, hopefully several people are involved and so I can get a meeting.
Yes, so we're, we're available whenever you and whoever from your neighborhood would like to meet and we will get all of the, the residents and CRNR management in the same room along with city staff and have that dialogue and get that feedback. Thank you.
Okay, um, anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have another, another gentleman at the podium. Sir, if you please speak in the microphone your name, and you do have three names.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Uh, I've been addressing the council and, and everybody with my, I know you've got my emails and I know about this, uh, speed, uh, situation going on and you have a study that's going to be happening. I just want to provide some additional information. I also have concerns about the CRNR. I've been recently reaching out to Mr. McNamara at CRNR directly for about the last two or three months about the odor going on. He's been communicating with me directly and he's been telling me I'm researching odor, I'm researching odor, but it still keeps coming back on a regular, consistent basis. I had reached out to you because I was hoping to deal with it on my own. I did not know what it was coming back anymore. So if there's a time and place where we can all meet together, I've offered that directly to him myself. He has yet to keep me up on my offer and I've offered many times to come over to my neighborhood so that we can discuss the smell when it's happening. Cause he always points out, why the technique goes smell right now. I'm like, it's happening right now. Drive over. Let's all meet together with my neighbor, you know, or our neighbors. And that never seems to take place. So if that's happening, I'd love to be part of that. If you could include me on that email chain, that would be fantastic.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor.
So another issue about the speeding, uh, I just wanted to address, uh, it's me, my emails have mentioned the speeding of, of the staff and or parents from Carver. So Carver School down at the end of Santa Rosalia. So I have reached out directly to Carver and I actually had a very good conversation with the principal, Brian Ball. We have been there. He was very open. We had a long discussion. He said they've actually had an issue with parents speeding in the parking lot, that they have an issue with that on a regular basis. So he was very open. He sent out a letter to the parents. He has to be a little bit soft with them when he's having that discussion. So he has to just kind of be a reminder. The staff, he was a little more direct with. And this is happening on a daily basis. We see, I work from home, so I see it in the morning when they're on their way to work. Um, it's almost no regard for the neighborhood because they fly in, they go past our house. I would say an average of forty to fifty miles an hour. Uh, they go back past, you know, this is sometimes around twelve thirty-two. I don't know if they're going to from lunch and then also when they're picking up their children. So he had a conversation with them. Uh, we've had this speed trailer there. That's worked on and off, you know, and the issue where it got stolen, now it's back. But, uh, you know, I know you're doing the study, hopefully something more permanent will be put in place. But what Mr. Ball pointed out to me is for him, it's very confusing. He comes into the neighborhood directly on Orangewood and it makes a right, goes down Santa Rosalia. He considers Orangewood a, uh, residential street. The speed limit sign says thirty-five miles an hour. So he said then when he makes a right onto Santa Rosalia, there's no speed limit signs. So he said, how can you enforce something to ask people to go a specific speed when there's no sign there telling them the right speed to go? When you travel through our neighborhood, there is one speed limit sign on Santa Rosalia. That is if you are going, uh, would be going south on Santa Rosalia between Orangewood and Shaw. So it's hard to enforce something that people are unaware of unless you just want them to hearken back to the days of when they took the driver's test and they were reminded then that twenty-five mile an hour speed limit is what it is in a residential area. So I think what we're asking for is put speed limit signs and maybe even down toward the school zone, put school zone signs, you know, to slow people down. This is something that's happened on a regular basis. I sent a bubble of email today and I included some, uh, photos from that crash that I, uh, referenced back on November twenty-seventh of last year and the damage that occurred to that vehicle. So I don't know if you folks received those, but, um, just that's one thing. And then one other thing I want to follow up on is the, uh, neighborhood issues that we're having as far as people keeping up with their sidewalks. We have people who are letting the grass literally grow with their sidewalks. So as we walk through the neighborhood, walking our dog, uh, residents walking through the neighborhood, you can't even get through. So we also have people like just have trees and things growing over. Is there any way that you folks can help out and maintain? So that's what I have to say tonight. I'm looking for some support. And, uh, again, if you can include me on that CRNR, uh, email and participate in that, I will be right with you.
Okay, Patricia, anyone else?
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak this evening? Hearing not, Mr. Mayor, there are no other members of the public wishing to speak this evening, sir.
Thank you. Our close, our communications. Uh, we have no written communications. Is there any mayor, chair, uh, uh, chair, council, agency initiated business? Okay, 12A committee reports, announcements, uh, from the council or agency?
Yes, we do have one. Mayor Proton Van?
Thank you so much. Um, councilmember Torres, I have the great pleasure of, um, attending the League of California Cities Conference, uh, last week and it was a really incredible experience. Uh, they have a bunch of amazing speakers and I feel glad to be able to, um, meet with other, um, elected as well as, uh, staff members and learn more about how other cities, um, deal with issues, you know.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else?
She's still speaking, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, I can't hear you. I apologize.
So in, uh, in addition to that, I did want to remind everybody that Orange County Housing Authority still has their waitlist open for those who are interested in applying for section eight. The last opportunity to apply is going to be Friday, which is a Friday of this month at eleven fifty-nine PM. You just go to oce.org. It takes probably fifteen, twenty minutes to apply. Um, and it's really important that anyone who is struggling with rent payments consider applying. And there are priorities for those who live or work in Stanton. Uh, if you're a veteran, a senior above the age of sixty-two or disabled, um, you do have priority. And the income limit is just fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for a single individual. So if you know anybody, anyone in your neighborhood or family member who might be struggling with rent or anticipate struggling with rent in the future, please encourage them to apply for a section eight waitlist. This is a once in a decade opportunity and there's only a few days left for this, uh, for them to apply. Um, additionally, I did want to, um, mention that we will be having our fourth annual mid-autumn festival. So this is a, a tradition that Speaker Josh Stein and myself and the OC Autumns Foundation has done since I was elected in Stanton. And this will happen on Sunday, October first, um, at Stanton Central Park from ten AM to twelve PM. And it'll be a huge, uh, children's event. So if you have any kids, please encourage them to come. There'll be lion dancing. There'll be, um, singing, dancing, reciting poetry by, uh, local, uh, students from our schools. Uh, there'll be a thousand cups of freshly made boa that will be out for free along with a thousand mooncakes, lanterns, goodies. Uh, we have a lot of nonprofits as well as, uh, different government agencies, uh, having booths that day to promote their services, which includes, um, vector control, MRC. Make sure you guys stop by the MRC booth, um, OCAFICA, as well as several other nonprofits as well. So I hope you guys, um, take your kids, um, this Sunday, October first, ten to noon, um, at Stanton Central Park.
Thank you, Ms. Man. Um, councilmember Torres?
I have a couple announcements. I just wanted to say last year I attended, uh, the middle of the festival, right? And it was very, uh, full things to do. So I recommend everybody, um, checking it out. Secondly, um, I had fun doing these things. And it feels like every time I go, they have more specific, um, programs or like speeches about things that, you know, really we can help. Like one of them was, um, it's, it's small city but big city problems, right? That was a good one. Um, I also met a council member who, um, has only five thousand residents. And their budget was, is half a million dollars, which I was shocked about. So, um, it was a really interesting experience to get, to learn from other council members and also most definitely, uh, making sure that we work, um, with our partners and, you know, spend our and also most definitely making sure that we work with our partners in the community, you know, to spend our resources. So that was wonderful.
Thank you.
I attended the Boys and Girls Club event over the weekend, and I had two citizens approach me during the event. One was Mr. Pierce, and another one was another resident that was concerned about the rain surpents in their area. So I called Anna today. We had a discussion. Anna does have staff working on these issues. And I just wanted to mention it because I know you're worried about it, and I know you want results, and so we're working on it.
Thank you, Carol. Anyone else? Okay, I've had some idle time, and so I have a few things I'd like to bring up if you'll just be patient. First of all, I want to thank the entire city council and staff for your co-sponsorship of our citywide fiesta that we had at St. Parchap. It was a very big success, and it was enjoyed by all the members of our community. The turnout was awesome. The food was great, and all the money that was raised went to charity. Next, we had the largest turnout ever for our September food drive. We had over 750 cars. I think the economy, being the way it is, things are getting a lot tougher. So I'm very happy to be able to continue to feed those in need. And I want to thank all the support that we get from the city and also from my volunteers. Around the corner, Harry's Cafe is getting ready to get its turkey dinners ready. We'll again serve about 2,500 meals on Thanksgiving. I'm very excited about that. That's going to be really good. On the transient front, I have good news. The lease had been signed with the Garden Grove Inn with Cal Optima, and that building is now vacant. Unfortunately, there's more of the transients on the street that have come into our community, but Jim Ren and his team are doing an awesome job. And finally, I've had it with the 22 freeway. So I reached out to State Senator Janet Ren, and I believe our city manager, if I'm not, if I'm incorrect, please let me know. But next month, early next month, we're going to have a meeting with Caltrans, Highway Patrol, the Senator Ren, the mayor and manager from Garden Grove, Westminster in Stanton. And for once and for all, hopefully, we can put an end to the transient population that's living and the public health issues under the 22 freeway. Anyway, thank you for bearing with me. Is there anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, we have none.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we'll move on to 12B. This is initiated items for a future meeting. 12C for a future study session. Okay, item 13 to our city attorney, HD.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have no items today.
Thank you. Item 14 goes to our executive director and city manager, Hannah.
Thank you. We have no items for me tonight.
Okay, and item 14A, at this time, the Orange County Sheriff's Department will provide the city council with an update on our current operations. Before we, oh yeah, before we do that, I do want to compliment our deputies and our chief Walters for the outstanding job that they did recently and some of the work in our community dealing with some of our major crimes, some of our gang-related activities, also our everyday patrols. It's nice to know that because we as a city have taken it upon ourselves to do selective prosecution of affordability to help keep our city safe, I'm sure that our deputies appreciate that, and I think that it's a great symbiosis also working with our outreach coordinators, taking care of the people on the street that need it. I am very impressed with what we do. It's too bad that the state and the county don't help us fund it. That being said, Chief Walters, you're up.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. Chief Walters is out this evening, and I will be providing obvious statistical data for Stanton Police Services. In August, Stanton deputies responded to 1,336 calls for service, an average of 44 calls per day. When not responding to assigned calls for service, deputies observed 391 violations of law and acted on them appropriately. Deputies made 30 arrests, including 12 felony bookings, seven misdemeanor bookings, nine warrant bookings, and two DUI bookings. They also issued 70 misdemeanor citations. Our Stanton Motor Deputy issued 192 traffic citations for the month, and the OCSD game unit arrested two documented game members for various crimes. In regard to enforcement of criminal activities, deputies handled eight robberies, 15 violent assaults, 12 burglaries, 24 thefts, and 10 stolen vehicles. In regards to investigations, investigators were assigned 109 total cases and were able to close 59 of them. The social enforcement team and pilot program team were also busy in August handling 27 arrests, 14 felonies, and 13 misdemeanors, issuing 13 citations for public nudity and narcotics possession, offering services to 10 homeless individuals, contacting 25 prostitutes and one juvenile prostitute, arrested one pimp, and recovered two stolen vehicles. The SET team also arrested one parolee-at-large suspect and assisted OCSD's human trafficking task force and narcotics teams. The SET team collected 20 grams of meth and five grams of crack cocaine. That concludes the report on behalf of Chief Walters. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Are there any questions out of any of the council members? Okay, that being said, I do want to give a special thanks to Chief Domon and the paramedics at 46. I know that I had a chance to mention them last time, but they did a great job in getting me to the hospital. The good news is, is that I'm home, I'm doing my therapy, and it's my intention to join all of you in my seat next to Alice at an next city council meeting. I'm going to be so happy to be back. Meanwhile, I want to thank each of my council members for the outstanding leadership that you are doing. The city has not missed a beat. Hannah and your staff have done an outstanding job. At this time, I'm going to adjourn in memory of a gentleman that I knew well. He was very young when he came on to the Stanton City Council, and that was Honorable Enrique, and we always called him Henry Mendez. Henry was an outstanding city council member. He was part of the founding fathers of our city. I want to pass our thoughts and prayers and feelings on to his entire family and to his kids. And again, I'll be adjourning this in honor of Enrique Henry Mendez, former council member, city of Stanton. Thank you and good night to all.